There you go. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Hello.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Mr. Schiff. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this connected to the City Council's Special Committee Meeting for Tuesday, December 8, 2020, to order. And we'll go right into public safety. We have two items for discussion this evening. One is the holdover from yesterday. And I will hand this over to Ms. Porterfield.
Thanks. Still having technical difficulties due to my computer, so I am on my phone. Okay, so the first item, and these really coincide. So yesterday, what I want really, the that discussion was really for council members. And what I really wanted to take a deep dive into is Chapter 93 of the City Code regarding the Civilian Police Review Board. Because as we go through this police reform, if you look at the document that was provided by the by the governor and us, you know, for us to work from, part of it is civilian oversight. So as a council, it is our responsibility to do the legislation. So that was an opportunity for us to look at the legislation, what the legislation says versus what the legislation, what the board actually does, and are we implementing it properly? So that was what that discussion I really wanted to have with the council last night. And I would like to bring it back to the agenda to make sure that we're looking at that and you know, making sure we do that. That would have been what is showing up as Item 2 on your agenda. So tonight, the discussion would be regarding the City Code in terms of how, and the CPRB, in terms of how the members are, have, a couple of members have reached out and wanted to talk about that some of the things in the code that are not being done and how we move towards getting that done. So in, for in the long run, creating the effectiveness of the board. I can't see who's on. I know that I heard Dick Shave on and Rose Harrell. So I know that those two members are on. So John, can we know, can I know somehow who was on so as we move forward in this discussion? Mr. Mutavaren?
Sure. We have Carl Williams, Dick Shaves, Maureen Obi, Miriam Caducey, and Rose Harrell. She, sorry, Sheila Rivera also. And I'm, yeah, those are all members from the Police Review Board.
Okay. So, you know, so this is just for a point of the discussion. And again, I want to reiterate that part of, as we go through this reform process, when, when the council has to bring, has to look over what's been brought forward and by April 1st submit something to the state, we also want to make sure that we don't just look, we only look at part of it. And integral part is the Civilian Police Review Board as it ties to the Police Department. And so therefore, really should be a part of police reform. So I'm really just opening this discussion for anyone who would like to give input on how it currently is, what they'd like to see differently, and how you can see thus improving our outcomes for this particular board. So I'm not going to call anybody, but if Mr. Mutavaren has control of the microphones, and so that's how I'd like to see us move forward.
I think Ms. Miriam Caducey and Ms. Maureen Obi have something to present to us. So I will ask either one of them to take the screen because I don't have access to what is going to be shared.
Okay.
So this is Miriam. You have to tell me how to do this because I don't know. I don't have the share. I don't have the ability to share. Not just myself, Mr. Carl Williams also has some edits to present.
If you, if you're not sure, if you don't have the ability, can we at least discuss? And let's, so can we at least discuss? First of all, I'd like to hear, because I don't attend a lot of meetings. I have been to some meetings. One of the things, my question was exactly how the process in terms of reviewing complaints. So can we just go through that, first of all? If whoever, you know, wants to, to explain how the process works so that we all hear that? Mr. Shave? Or Mr. Williams? Somebody explain how the process works?
I can unmute myself here. Here I am. Does anyone on our board want to go through this or am I stuck with it? All right, here I go. We deal with citizen complaints, either coming directly from the citizenry or via a form or any sort of telephoning. Somehow a complaint gets to the Police Department. They investigate the complaint using what we would call Internal Affairs, but it's really called Professional Standards and Safety. They have two full-time people doing that and they review video, body cams, the whole thing. They, any complaint will be investigated and when they're done, when they think they're they prepare a report for the chief who reviews it, sends it back if necessary. When it's fine with the chief, it comes to us. In other words, we don't investigate, we review the investigation. Plenty of things happen that we don't see because we only deal with stuff that turns into complaints. Many things go directly to law, hopefully not too many things. That would be when someone gets a lawyer and sues the city. Other things are happen, happen internally to the police force and where they're disciplining themselves. So we see what you might say is a subset of allegations about police misbehavior and we review the summaries. And that's what we do. We also try to ride along with the police and figure out what they're doing and try to build trust in that way. And we are working on getting a better complaint form so the citizenry understands how to, how this process works, which in general, I think they don't. That's it for that. Any questions?
So I do have a clarifying question. So at this point in time, no points really go directly to the CPRB. They all come through the Police Department?
Yes. If in the past they've come to the CPRB, they would have, they would have been routed right to the Internal Affairs guys.
Okay.
So I don't really know, you know, historically, but we don't investigate complaints and I think the citizenry might think we do.
Okay. So in terms, so you see, you see the findings from the Police Department. And so basically, they, it's just reported to you what the outcome is?
After the chief is, yes.
Okay.
We see it as the final step. After we approve of, after we don't have any problems with it and we haven't gone back and asked more materials or we vote to pass the case forward, then the person complained is sought out and they explain, usually via letter or lately more with a letter and a personal call from Internal Affairs. So the complaint knows what's happened.
Beg your pardon?
And that, that's the, the end of that particular case, if you see what I mean.
Okay. And the letter also comes from the Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And, and one, one final question. In terms of that, has there been, since you've been on the board, has there been any situation where you've actually sent things back or asked questions in terms of the findings?
I've been on the board two or three years now. It's been, it's a rare occurrence. It has happened. We've never flatly rejected a case. We've asked, we've pended them and asked for more information. We've also asked for things like reports of response times, things like that, where we will, we'll ask and get an answer later. But to your question, no, we typically have agreed with the results of a lot of the investigations. Prior to body cameras, there was a whole lot of, he said, she said, that they couldn't figure out an answer to. So we would just say, okay, there's no real answer and review it that way. Nowadays, things are, things tie up a lot tighter, I think, mostly because of better internal procedures and body cameras.
Okay. Thank you. So Mr. Mutavaren, I do see something on my screen. You said that someone had something to share?
Yeah, that is correct. Ms. Caducey, I have my screen up here. Ms. Caducey, can you walk us through what is this about? You need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. The, what you're seeing on the screen are the comments from myself and Ms. Obi. I had sent out an email earlier today asking the board members if they have any comment. I would compile them into a spreadsheet and Ms. Obi had replied. Mr. Carl has mentioned that he has his own comments. So we're going to go section by section. So Mr. Williams, if you have a comment for a particular section, you can just join in and, and voice it. I won't be able to type while you're talking, but I will gather your information afterwards and we will put it in that same document. For Section 93.1, the name of the organ, the name of the board is called the Civilian Police Review Board. I, I had recommended that it be called, instead of civilian, we should call it, we should call it Citizen Police Review Board. And Ms., Ms. Obi had stated otherwise, that, you know, the name would be similar to the Albany Board, but everywhere we go, it's always CPRB. Everybody knows it as CPRB. Ms. Obi, would you comment on that, please?
Hi, there I am. So I guess it was a minor point that I was making, that for years we've had the same acronym as the Albany Review Board. So it's kind of, I guess, a bit confusing for me. A lot of times, people don't want to be compared to the Albany Board, but we have the same exact acronym as they do and almost the same exact name as a result. Well, that makes sense. So I was just suggesting the idea of having a different name and a different acronym. Not a huge deal.
Mr. Williams, do you have any comment?
No comments for that section.
Thank you. Section 93.
Excuse, Ms. Caducey? Do any of the other, I noticed that they're the only two that answered. But is there anyone of the, of the members that may want to make any comments at all? Could we just, I'll make sure, any members?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was just that. No one had responded to the, to the email. That's why. Okay, yes. Please.
May I ask a question? I actually have two questions. One is, did you review this with the police task force yet, the way that you're reviewing it with us? And secondly, so am I, I'm feeling like maybe the whole Police Review Board hasn't looked at this yet? Because we're just looking for input now into some of the suggestions that some of the members of the Police Review Board are suggesting?
No, I said, we have, we have the, we all have the legislation. So when I got the email, I, when I got the invitation, I requested from the board members if they had any comment, they could share it. Instead of each person saying something, just like only Ms. Obi responded. And this afternoon, Mr. Williams says he has comments as well. That is not part of this. So that's why I'm calling on him to ask him if he has, if he has any comment. Because myself and Ms. Obi's are in the spreadsheet.
And, and I cannot, and so further, at this, this point, at this point in time, Ms. Patrick and for everyone else, this is an opportunity for everyone and anyone on the board, you know, those folks who've been, who are on the ground doing the work day to day or month to month, or however often they, they meet, to, to give their input. So this isn't the end all be all, but I definitely think this is the conversation that, because, you know, some of the board members, you know, had concerns. And I felt, I felt that the entire board, rather than us hearing from a couple of people individually or separately or however, that we should have the entire board to be a part of our public safety meeting so we can have this discussion.
And I just want to add, this is Sheila, that we, I received that email last night at almost 8 o'clock at night. So yeah, I didn't get a chance to review this because I am still working and I am still working until 5 o'clock in the evening. So I don't have any comments prepared either because I was in, I didn't have the ability to review it, the information. This is kind of, this was kind of last minute.
So when did you get the email to invitation to the meeting? There was, this legislation wasn't attached for you?
When did I get the invitation to the meeting?
Yeah, that, the, the, and this, the legislation should have been attached to that.
Well, what, the whole discussion about coming up with, with notes and things like that, or submit changes, amendments, recommendations by 4:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, that was sent to us last night.
This was, this was myself sending the, sending, I don't know whether everybody had it. I sent it last night. But the invitation came out, ooh, I don't know, a while ago, a week ago?
It was last week's Thursday, I'm going to say.
Okay.
Okay. So, so let me just, let me just further say that, Ms. Rivera, that if, you know, this isn't the end of the conversation. And so we definitely would continue to want to hear any suggestions, concerns, you know, ways to improve the effectiveness, all of those things. We wanted, this is not, this is just the beginning of a discussion.
All right. Oh, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
This is Rose Harrell, and I just received that email. It was also yesterday about any suggestions or comments or anything else on this. So I actually did not have enough time to fully review the whole Review Board, Chapter 93. And I think we needed a little bit more time for each one of us to be able to go over it and, you know, pick out the parts that they feel are justified. And I noticed in yours that because you do have no change, no change, no change. I guess you're referring to the legislative intent? That you're, everybody's saying that it should not be changed. Is that what you're saying from your, what you're showing here, or am I incorrect?
So I think Ms. Caducey's saying that she doesn't see any change, and that does not speak for everyone.
This is, this is a compilation of myself and Ms. Obi because I received Ms. Obi's changes. So anybody else that have any other changes, instead of presenting multiple documents to the, for, for, instead of receiving multiple documents for amendments, I would, I would recommend that we put all those changes together because we, I use different colors for different, well, when, when it's Ms. Obi's change, I put a different color. So what I would do is, once I have everybody's comments, we would have different colors for different persons' comments. But at this point in time, this is, again, myself and Ms. Obi's comments that are on there. So at any time during this conversation, if somebody wants to, wants to present an amendment or say something to the, to the effect of the legislation, they are welcome to. This like, as, as Ms. Porterfield said, this is not final. This, this is myself and Ms. Obi's comments if.
Carl Williams, if you can hear me clearly.
Yes.
Comments started with the Section 2.
Okay.
Just get started. In Paragraph A, it states, "Further, the citizens of the community will be best served with civilian oversight of internal police complaint procedures and investigations." Just stopping at that section, I thought it was important where, I believe this is where a lot of the misconfusion lies within the community's understanding of how the CPRB operates. And then also maybe some misunderstandings or just misalignments with how the, how the Police Department, excuse me, expects the CPRB to run. So I thought this paragraph, Paragraph A, outlined that by design, currently, the way the City Code outlines the CPRB, it has us designated more as an oversight and not necessarily as an investigatory body. So I saw that this actual paragraph is something that should be either amended to reflect the ambitions of a few of our members to have the CPRB be more in, in line with, with having access to more of the complaint processes that the Office of Professional Standards currently utilizes. Moving down to Paragraph C, an excerpt that I wanted to highlight was, "The City Council further finds and declares that the conduct of law enforcement officials is subject to public, departmental, and executive scrutiny and accountability." I believe as Councilwoman Porterfield has outlined, and also as we've heard throughout community conversations, is that on the Civilian Police Review Board, we will receive findings of complaints with several layers of redactions. We've had these conversations within our immediate board and we have not gotten to a standpoint to discuss how to roll back some of those, but currently, the way the City Code outlines, it should grant us more access to some of those redacted paragraphs. Now, as a board, we discussed, because in the code, further down the sections, it'll be discussed, it talks about the double-blind procedures. And we understand why those types of protocols are instituted, but we understand, but we would like to see some, not all of them, some of the redactions curtailed backwards. And then the last change that I had, or just the foot stomp in Section 2, is it states, "Its goals are to improve communication between the Police Department and the community, to increase police accountability and credibility with the public, and to create a complaint review process that is free from bias and informed of actual police practices." I thought this was an important paragraph to highlight because myself, I do not believe that we need to separate the investigatory processes as opposed to improving upon our currently utilized methods. Because I think that that might negatively marginalize the relationships that this chapter was intended to strengthen. Where it was, we should be reinforcing the relationships between the Police Department and the community. And I think having two independent investigatory processes might lead to duplicating procedures and also might break down those trusting barriers rather than upstanding them. Those are my comments for Section 2.
Anybody else has any, I'm sorry, anybody else has any comment for Section 2?
In, yeah, sort of, in general, when Carl speaks of the redactions and the lack of visibility in these cases, which are put together well, but there's a lot of coding involved and we, we don't get to see a lot. With the 50A law going away, there may certainly be an opportunity for us to get better visibility at important things like discipline records and things like that. So we want to be able to see deeper into the Police Department in collaboration so that they can earn our trust. And that's how that goes. The issue of us investigating separately is a big issue. It's a big issue and an expensive issue, and it's not anything I'm prepared to really dive deep into now. I think the city might, might look at it. And I must tell you, our board probably disagrees about it. And we were trying to get it all together and instead it's coming at you in fragments. So I'm sorry about that.
Anybody else for Section, Section 2? Please unmute yourself. Hearing, but Section, Section 3, which talks about membership of the board. Ms., Ms. Obi?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I needed to hear that. So I guess I just wanted to clarify this. There's, I think there tends to be some confusion in terminology when it comes to investigatory powers or what is sometimes referred to as monitoring the investigation of a complaint. So to have full investigatory powers is, is a heavy, a heavier lift, much heavier lift. And there's kind, there's, there's a middle ground, which is monitoring a complaint or monitoring the investigation of a complaint, right? So, and you have to think through, you know, as, as a board, if you want full investigatory powers, what are you planning to do with that? If you're doing the same kind of investigation that a police department is doing or you're hiring an actual bona fide investigator and paying them as such, what do you plan to do with the information that you find? Now, to monitor the, the Police Department's investigation of the complaint is a very different thing. It's just kind of walking through their process, not having the same kind of responsibilities as they would. Like you're not interviewing complainants. You're not calling complainants. You're not asking complainants questions when the Police Department is interviewing them. You can ask to have the You can ask to um, have the, an officer step outside and request that a question be asked if you wanna delve a little deeper into their, their interview, but you cannot approach a complainant directly. So I just wanted to point that out, that there is, we need to be clear about what we mean when we say investigating.
Um, we're in section ninety-three point three, that talks about the membership, Ms. Obie. Um, you you had your comments on there, self-nomination by committee members for getting, by city council, if you could um, explain that uh, for us, please?
Sure, I'd like to um, reconsider the idea, and this is going to seem radical, but the idea of um, revisiting the I, the um, process of having various organizations appoint board members to be CPRB members. Um, I think that there, there are different ways to look at it. Um, the current process has some benefits. I think it has some, um, there are some, there's a few pitfalls as well. I think that if we're going to have organizations appoint board members, I think that they need to be, we could be a little more intentional about which organizations are appointing them, and whether or not they have a real interest and stake in terms of, let's say criminal justice, or human rights, or civil rights. Um, you know, some organizations that are currently appointing board members do not necessarily. Um, I understand, you know, it can be, it could be a little political, and I understand wanting to give different groups um, an opportunity to have board members weigh in and be a part of the process. But I also think that one of the pitfalls is that we lose the opportunity to engage people in the community that are not necessarily connected to one of these organizations already, but they are passionate about the work that the board does. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams?
I agree with everything uh, Miriam just said. I think board members should be uh, able to be selected at large, and I think similar to what she said, it enables all members to serve on this review process without having a community affiliations.
Anybody else, please?
I agree strongly. Uh, also, I I bring a blast from the past, Richard Hominek, who is very, very important in getting this thing going again, in I, two thousand fourteen, I think. Um, he's, he told me that one of the biggest problems with recruitment is these nine groups. Um, the, the, it looks good on paper, but the groups don't come up with people in a timely manner, and vacancies exist. So irrespective of the politics of it, it's just very clunky. I support nominating self-nomination, but if you have a group behind you, that would be fine. Let the city council pick new members based on, you know, their application uh, in a timely manner and fill our seats for us. This would not take anything away from the groups that are interested, and it would be so much easier. So thank you, Maureen, for coming up with that, because that's great.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have, um, Ms. Kudjuski, I have a question regarding the board and the holdover. Um, if I'm not mistaken, there are several holdovers at this point in time on the board, and how is the board treating that? And just follow up, is the board reaching out to this organization to submit a name for new appointments?
Um, we, yes, we've got our board full now, which is good, and we've got the attention of the groups again, which is also good. Um, we've had quite a bit of trouble the past two years. The holdovers, I believe, would be Rose, our secretary, who's just been wonderful and want, and is happy to keep being the secretary, and I don't wanna replace her. And so, and uh, I think perhaps myself, although I think if you become chair, you get an extension. Well, you have to look into the bylaws, which of course I haven't uh, completely scrutinized in that regard.
Anyone else?
I have one quick thing, I, I just one quick thing. Um, and it will get, we'll delve into this a bit more, this is Maureen, that, you know, the taking responsibility of monitoring membership, when terms begin, when they end, there's nothing really, there is wording in the legislation that says that groups have a certain amount of time to replace board members. Um, and but I think it could be a bit clearer, and I I believe I mentioned it previously, um, and it might be in the spreadsheet, where it needs to be clearly stated, you know, what warrants replacing um, a board member once they have turned out, turned out. Are they, is it their choice whether or not they stay, or do, are they expected to stay? Is it up, do they have the option of staying or not staying until they're replaced? I think that we're not really clear about what should and shouldn't happen, or how it works.
Thank you, um, section four. Um, I had no change for section four, um, Ms. Obie didn't submit any change for section four, Mr. Williams?
In section four, uh, the Office of Professional Standards has a very uh, close relationship with the Civilian Police Review Board in that we rely on them to to process and facilitate a lot of the complaint processes, but also they are the individuals or the agency that speaks to a lot of these complaints. So for me, and and be this my lack of understanding of what ex-official member is, but I I would like to have a conversation about formally making the Office of Professional Standards an ex-official member uh, on this process. Uh, I think it, in addition to having the Public Safety Commissioner, that'll only increase our our, our ability to to delve deeper into these complaints. But then also, if we needed to then go into an executive session, there still is that opportunity for us to exclude those two individuals and still have our our close-knit discussions, but I don't think that we should rely on the board majority to have these conversations. I think they are already so interwoven into uh, our, every aspect of of these complaint process. And if, unless we're seeking to sever that tie, I would like to to finally define it moving forward.
Anyone else? Alright, let's move to section five. Um, I had no change, um, Ms. Obie had no change, um.
No change for me as well.
Anyone else? Alright, moving on to such, I'm sorry, moving on to section six, which is term limits. Um, I had no change, Ms. Obie had a, had a comment. Ms. Obie, please?
So what uh, is new that I haven't said already? Let's see.
Section six, check, section six.
So let me just say one thing, um, please, Ms. Kudjuski, I should have said this earlier. When you say section six, can you at least read the title?
I'm sorry, yes, I should, I should. Section ninety-three point six, term limits, holdovers and vacancies. I have no change, um, Ms. Obie had a comment?
Um, I guess we, um, I think that we might wanna consider um, putting into into words the idea of, I think it says, how soon before, like, there should be a a smooth um, succession, right? When someone's coming off and someone is coming on, so that there aren't gaps, we don't have to struggle to get quorum, that we should be proactive about recruiting for replacements. And no, I, it's the same. I, not much else, I don't have anything else to add to that.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, uh, this is Carl Williams speaking. Uh, within this section, paragraph A, it states, "Any member whose term has expired shall hold over until his or her replacement shall be named." Uh, similar to, to what Maureen and Councilwoman, Councilman Rivera, excuse me, stated, uh, this mandate unclear, I believe, can create unintended consequences for newer members who lack the minimum training considerations, and then also for older members who potentially become unaware of trending issues within the community. So similar to what Councilwoman Porterfield just mentioned, I think without finally defining how members are going to transition through their terms, I think that creates uh, vague understandings of 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 how to to generate continuous membership. So one of the propositions that I had, and I understand that we are a board and that we will vote on this, but it's just uh, food for thought, uh, is having members after their two consecutive terms limit their ability to sit as either the chair, vice chair, or secretary. I love you both, Rose and Dick, but I think this creates uh, that that continued molting pot of of continuous refreshing individuals and and ideas at the helm of this review board. And I believe that those individuals should be allowed to remain on the board as active members until another community member seeks to uh, take their seat. Uh, and that would only happen after they exhausted their two consecutive terms. But I definitely think that as of currently, we have a lot of experience on our board. I think what we're running into is just having a lack of defined understandings of how we operate and how the community wishes us to operate. But I believe once we finish going through these uh, the city code, I believe that we'll finally get realigned with a, a, an understanding that'll, that'll promote uh, successful policies moving forward.
Anyone else?
I would agree with that, um, this is Maureen again. I I guess what I, I hopefully said already and is typed in is that I I think the member should have the choice, you know, to, they should be able to say whether or not they're, they're tired and they're done after they've they've done their two full terms, or if they're willing to stay until they're replaced.
Um, question, Maureen, that was presented to me. I was given that opportunity if I had wanted to remain or not, and I did choose to stay, but I did have the opportunity.
Okay.
I was asked.
I'm just saying, the wording wasn't really make that.
For you, yeah.
Sure, thank you. Alright, so um, I think, so we, I think that um, I'm trying to capture comments as well. And unless there's more, I think we can move to the next section, I think the vacancy thing, I think we're, I think we're clear. And 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 let me just also continue to say that anything that's not said tonight, that you think, wake up in the middle of the night, um, board members, and it's information that you want to share with us, you still have the opportunity to do that.
Absolutely. Um, section seven, board member training, ninety-three point seven, section ninety-three point seven, board member training. Um, there is a, there is a section further down that mentioned executive director. That's why I, but this um, this comment in red is mine, and it is, and I just wanted added, additional training as agreed upon by the board and upon the recommendation of the executive director. That's what I wanted added on to this section, because further down, there is language for the hiring of an executive director. Um, that's what I wanted to add there. Um, the blue is um, Ms. Obie's comments. You wanna, you wanna, you wanna expand on that, um, Ms. Obie?
Um, sure, sure, quickly, I think um, one thing that just came to mind is the idea of NAPECO conference participation, which is yearly. And so we we need to keep that in mind um, when we refer to professional development or training, because that's the primary training um, in terms of, you know, the overall look or view of civilian oversight of the police that is available to us. Um, and I don't think that the executive director would need to necessarily recommend whether or not board members participate or go to a NAPECO conference. What did I actually say? So, right, I think that um, there needs to be a more intentional board orientation, um, and overview, and it it, we need to go delve a bit deeper into how the board operates, what the background is, what the legislation and bylaws include. You know, I think it's a sit-down with each incoming board member, uh, how complaints, what the complaint process is, how it works, how they can, what they can expect to happen, have happened during each meeting. Um, just to kind of set that uh, set the bar where it needs to be before they actually come into a meeting and vote on a complaint. That's my take.
Thank you, Mr.? Yeah, Mr. Williams?
Uh, yes, so in this paragraph, it states that board members shall participate within the first year of appointment and training provided by the State Department, its Office of Professional Standards, and the City of Skenecty's Law Department. Uh, as many of us uh, who who who, who hold jobs within the, their civilian capacity, if something's not documented, it never happens. So I think at this present time, it's safe to say that a lot of our trainings as Civilian Police Review Board members is not necessarily documented, or it's not finely documented. Uh, so I would like to see those procedures better outlined, so that if we were audited, we'd be able to look back and and actually identify not necessarily what members went through training, but also to to Q C, or quality check, what trainings they actually went through, uh, to understand if they're still uh, effective. But then also, I would like to expand this section to have our training be validated by local organizations to ensure that our board members are adequately prepared for their impending responsibilities. And I think if we outline and define training, that'll allow us to streamline new recruits into the board that are more readily readily prepared for their duties, and I think that that will uh, circumvent our issues with having individuals remain on the board past their, their term limits.
Anyone else? Thank you, section ninety-three point eight, removal of board member. I had no change, um, Ms. Obie?
Sure, I basically um, hold the opinion that city council uh, appoints board members and that they should be responsible for removing them. Of course, they would, I'm assuming, rely on the input from the board, um, unless they're very involved with the board, but um, I would think that the ultimate responsibility for removing a board member should be held by city council.
Um, Mr. Williams?
No comment.
Anyone else?
Okay, and I'll, yes, 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 anyone, um, so, and folks, please speak up. Um, I know that she's being very specific, because only people answer, but as we go through this, if there's anything you wanna add at this moment, I really encourage you to do that.
I wanna just uh, throw a point there. The appointments to this board are actually made by myself, they're designated, the mayor makes the appointments based on recommendations from these groups. And you know, the council might consider changing that process, but you can't diminish the authority of an elected official during his time, or during the term. So that that would be over three years out down the road that you'd be able to entertain direct appointment by the city council.
Um, thank you, sir, anyone else?
I, I didn't see where there was a request direct, um, I think the, was the ask for the city council to be able to remove people? That, I thought that was the ask. So mayor, you're saying that even if it meant removing, that would be up to you as well, is that correct?
I I believe so also, there are the the rules set out that the board itself can remove people for certain criteria.
Right. Okay. Alright, just wanted to clarify. Thank you. So then perhaps I should, should revise my recommendation to say, I would then revise my recommendation to say that they would be removed by the mayor? Well, you, you can leave it at that, is, and as, as, because this isn't the final end-all-be-all. Um, as you know, this has to go to the city council as well. So your comments can remain, but the mayor has made it clear, and so we'll, we'll definitely take that in consideration. Go ahead, Ms. Kudjuski.
Um, section ninety-three point nine, ninety-three dash nine, forum meetings and attendance. Um, I recommended no change, and Ms. uh, Obie recommended summer break, um, to add the summer breaks, uh, the breaks between July and August. Ms. Obie?
No, I think that's pretty simple. Um, I don't know that it's something, I don't remember, you know, board members talking about the possibility of a break during July and August, so I really uh, don't have anyone else's input to to work with. But um, it's just my suggestion.
Um, when I saw your suggestion, I will, I agreed, I agreed with the break, because um, we need a board retreat, and it's very difficult to ask a board member to attend a board need a board retreat, and it's very difficult to ask a board member to attend a board meeting and also a retreat because we all have external lives outside of the board. So I think a break in this, at least a month break where we don't meet to review any cases, it's just for us to get together and and have a retreat. That's, 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 I would change my no change to the board retreat be in lieu of a board meeting.
So I just, I'll go ahead, if there's board members before I say anything, board members have any?
No, I I don't, Councilwoman Porterfield, I think, I was just going to point out that we have considered, I at least I have considered the the idea of not amending the legislation and being specific, but maybe saying that the board will meet at least a certain number of times a year as opposed to once per month.
Um, I understand that, I just want to make sure that, yeah, and I just want to just let all of the board know as we're all here together to say that the concern that brings up for me is what happens during the time that the board is not meeting, and there are complaints to review since there is a timeline process that needs to go with it? And keep in mind that we're dealing with residents complaints and, you know, and so how long are we making people wait? So I think that's just, you know, we need, as we go forward, just to also think about that there are people on the other end kind of waiting to see what the outcome of what their concerns are. So I want to make sure that we just keep that up in front.
So, but Ms. Kudjus, if I can just add, that was going to be my one comment, that I agree that it's difficult to place those types of time restraints on volunteers because we are all volunteers, it's a lot to ask for. And and I do agree that having a treat to to get to and have everyone to get on board with just the upcoming trends is very, very important. But I would think that at a minimum, just having a rolling calendar date that took into consideration whether complaints were sitting in a queue, or if we didn't have any because there are certain time periods throughout the year where we don't have complaints to process. So I agree with the retreat, just as long as we're not placing the complaints of the city, those coming at a disadvantage.
Anyone else?
I think retreats are a good idea. Periodically in the, well, sometimes throughout the year investigative volume goes down and we have to cancel the meeting anyway for lack of cases. I'm sure in the course of the summer, we could work with the police to maybe shove things around a little, give us at least a month off, might be fine. So there you go. But I'm all for a retreat.
Anyone else? Ninety-three dash ten, Officers and Bylaws. I, my recommendation to include a vice chair, and Ms. Obie had the same recommendation to consider a vice chair now. Mr. Williams? Section ninety-three dash ten, Mr. Williams?
Yes, so I'm trying to pull it up right now because I had that same consideration as well, but I believe in that section, it also states that they are, that the the board is allowed to to put in place any any position. So I thought that it would be redundant to actually put in place an actual vice chair, but if everyone is in favor of that, I would I would support that. I just didn't know if the way our, the way the city code reads now, if we needed to formally put a vice chair.
Anyone else?
Carl, right now, you're the vice, right?
No, I know I'm, I know I'm the vice chair.
I see that, right? We should, I apologize, Carl, because I'm wondering, was that necessary? But I guess it does say that by resolution or by law, you can establish such other officers. So does that mean that right now, we're in a position to do that, that we need to pass a resolution or a bylaw in order to have a vice chair officially?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Anyone else? Section ninety-three dash eleven, Mediation. While this is in our bylaw, I recommended no change. We, we are not in a position to mediate. Ms. Obie, could you expand on your recommendation?
Sure. You you made a good point, Ms. Kudjus. We are not currently in a position to mediate complaints unless we hire mediators or board members are trained to facilitate mediation.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Kudjus. So I thought this section, and then we can, I I would recommend us combining it with the next section, section eleven, which is the powers and duties, because this is where I think a lot of the language starts to contradict itself, where it outlines what the board is able to mediate, and then it outlines what the Skidnae Police Department is obligated to file. And I think that these, this, that this language just starts to really not not cohesively read together. So my only ask is that of this section, section eleven, where it states that the board shall encourage and facilitate mediation of any complaint as a first step in the appropriate cases, I would like a definition of what encouraged and facilitate mean to the city council, but then also what the first step in appropriate cases look like, because I think that vaguely, it can mean a number of things.
And I think it, the, what, what, what you, what you're inferring is, is that we do not have any training in mediation, and I think as a mediator, presented to you in training, when, when and if you should go to mediation. And I think it's lack of training, I believe, Carl, is the reason, I mean, we don't, we have not been trained, and we do not have the ability to hire a mediator.
The legislation is specific and says that the board shall establish a list of approved mediators.
Correct.
And their qualifications, and they will be subject to approval by the board majority. We can hire or contract for the services of a mediation facilitator.
As well, yes.
So beyond that, Carl, are you?
Well, so my only other comment is if we can just jump down, if you can leave the the screen where it is right now, in section twelve, the power and duties, I want to say.
Before you move on to that, before we move on, does anybody else have any comment on section eleven?
Oh, no, I wasn't moving on, I wasn't moving on. I just wanted to reference something that'll address this topic.
Okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Bear with me, says the board shall have the power to independently review complaints made to it concerning the policies and procedures of the Skidnae Police Department. The board may hire an independent investigator to review and investigate complaints about policy or procedures. Now, I think that clearly tells us that we can hire an investigatory process, or agency, if it's a matter of complaints regarding policy or procedure. So for me, if it's anything outside of that framework, we do not maintain that 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 ability.
But I think every complaint is about policy or procedure, isn't it?
Correct.
So, so can I, so tell me how you're tying that to mediation, because I think that's what you're saying, but I'm not clear on that, Carl.
Within this section of ninety-three twelve, it it outlines as policy and procedure, but if if those, if you read further down to it, it it outlines that the police department is supposed to automatically receive investigations about police officers misconduct. I I believe people can read this at their leisure. What I'm inferring is if both of those mean the same thing, or if every issue can be a policy or procedure, why break it down between what the police needs to file and what the Skidnae, or what the civilian police review board needs to identify? I don't know, Mr. Colton can weigh in on that if he was following what I was saying, but...
I'm not completely following you on this, Carl. I'm trying to understand exactly what it is. I think it needs to be, you know, I'm comparing the different sections that you're mentioning here, and I'm trying to better understand it. So if you can explain it a little bit, you know, break it down a little bit more for me to understand, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so the place that I I outlined in section twelve is the power, the the board shall have the power to independently review complaints made to it concerning the policies and procedures of the Skidnae Police Department. My comment that I wrote down is, it states that the council's understanding is that the community makes complaints to the police department or to the civilian police review board. And I wanted to propose that the civilian police review board have full authority to access any aspect of the Office of Professional Standards investigation process, ensuring optimal transparency and access to real-time reviewing procedures. And I wanted to note that does the CPRZ, does the civilian police review board reserve access to investigating the efficacy of complaints against policy or procedures? So, Mr. Colton, at your leisure, if we don't need to have all of our final understandings made at this time, I would just like, if you can just put your your heightened attention on sections eleven and twelve to me, they they read very muddled.
Well, I think there are a couple of things to look at. The first is ninety-three dash twelve is, are for direct complaints that go right to the board versus an internal affairs complaint, which is first handled, you know, by the Office of Professional Standards. In ninety-three dash thirteen, which is the power and duties related to internal affairs complaints, particularly subparagraph B, it does say that the board shall be provided with all documents relating to an investigation. Now, I know we're talking about a double-blind system, and that's something separate that we can, you know, that, you know, we can address separately. But my understanding is when a complaint, and you can correct me if I'm wrong in terms of this process, when you receive a case to review, you're, you are provided with documents, all the documents relating to that particular investigation. Sure, there may be redactions to protect both, you know, a complainant and an officer who's, you know, been accused of a violation of of policy or procedure. So I don't know if, I don't know what documents you're not getting, you know, or if you're getting the whole case file. You had indicated that, you know, you're not getting things for under ninety-three dash twelve related to direct complaints, you're not getting the full case file. I don't, obviously, you know, I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to, obviously, the Office of Professional Standards to know exactly what you're getting or not getting. And if you're not getting something, there obviously may be reason for that because of the double-blind system in terms of protecting, as I said, the complainant and the officers. Related to ninety-three eleven, it's very separate in terms of the mediation. The mediation is if a complaint comes to the board and you're investigating the complaint, it's the possibilities there for a mediator to try to resolve, you know, the issue between the particular officer involved and the complainant. And that's the purpose of that. So it's not the CPRB doing the mediation, it's using a hired professional on the outside. Beyond that, the CPRB is investigating, you know, under ninety-three twelve, investigating direct complaints, looking at, it says here, you can hire an independent investigator. Whether or not that's possible from a budget standpoint is obviously a separate question. Related to the internal affairs complaints, it will have already been investigated by the Office of Professional Standards, and essentially, it's a review of the determination made by the Office of Professional Standards. And then, you know, there are powers for the CPRB beyond that. I don't know if that addresses the question or the concern or the differences between those sections. Happy to clarify.
I don't know if I'm getting it forward. I think, I think moving forward, I just have further conversations within the review board.
And Mr. 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 Williams, could you also like, make sure that you submit to that in writing so we can really like take a look at it, read it over and over again? It's because as the city council looks at the legislation, it's going to be important that we're clear on what's being asked or said or suggested. Thank you.
Ms. Kudjus? Any, 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 any other, any other comment? Ninety-three eleven or ninety-three twelve? Ninety-three dash thirteen, powers and duties, ooh, powers and duties dash claims. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, Miriam, I had one comment about ninety-three dash twelve, and that's how long complainants have to file their complaint. I don't believe that forty-five days is a sufficient amount of time. And I'm I'm open to talking or considering how long, how much time they should have. And then we also want to be cognizant about what the current legislation does state, and that's that the reports from the police department have to be filed with the board within thirty days unless unusual or extraordinary circumstances require a longer period for investigation. And when that happens, they need to report the nature of the circumstances to the board. And in turn, the board should also notify the department within thirty days following the receipt of the investigation report in the event, like, we should be expected to review the complaint within a reasonable amount of time. And if we're not reviewing that complaint, we owe it to the officer to let the police department know why we haven't. So basically, I just think that complainants would benefit from having more than forty-five days to submit a complaint.
Thank you. Anyone else? Should we go through ninety, ninety-three dash thirteen? That's the next one. Powers and duties dash complaints. I wanted to remove, I, my recommendation is to remove the double-blind system, add the word police, where it says all complaints concerning members of the police department should be filed with the CPRB. This is my recommendation. And Maureen, Ms. Obie, you had something different?
I do. Yeah, I feel very strongly about the cleanliness, you know, keeping the process smooth and efficient and maintaining confidentiality. I love my fellow Skidnae City Human Rights Commissioners, I love the the board members, but I do not think that we can rely on these various groups to handle complaint forms with confidential information on them, including officers' names, complainants' names, and get, make sure that they get to the police department in a timely manner and in order to be addressed. I don't think, that that leaves just, it's, it's a sloppy process. And I think that we would be concerned necessarily, you know, that John Doe, albeit a well-meaning human rights commissioner, you know, forgot about this complaint form and it's sitting in his glove compartment for two weeks before he remembers to pass it on. I'm sorry, I'm being a bit blunt, but I feel pretty strongly about this.
Mr. Williams?
So my my only retort to that is, I think we have a lot of members and organizations within our community who have mentioned throughout these police reform conversations that they're willing to help. So I think at a minimum, I would entertain giving those said organizations the opportunity to be active participants in this process by means of helping individual community members process their complaint forms. Now, with regards to instituting any new change, I think we should have a timeframe where we assess the validity of that. So I think if we either gave it a designated timeframe or a defined timeline to understand whether complaints were being processed in a timely manner, I think, I think I would, I would be on board for that. But I definitely agree with Ms. Obie's comments. It would, it would do the process a disjustice if individuals were not submitting the complaints on behalf of their commit, commit, community organization or community members. But my one comment that I was going to make in regards to the section thirteen B, where it says the board shall not participate in an internal the board shall not participate in an internal affairs investigation, nor shall it issue subpoenas concerning the same, the board shall be provided with all documents relating to an investigation. We've constantly heard throughout this call about funding and realistic asks. I think the board should be authorized to participate more closely with the Office of Professional Standards, not in a means to be over their shoulders, but I think, as we've heard throughout the community, we need to establish a level of trust with our police department. And I think that starts with having transparent and open access. Now, it doesn't mean every investigation we're going to be wanting to request to see body worn cameras, or going to wanting to sit behind Lieutenant Antonovich, Antonovich's desk, making sure that he's actually crossing his Ts and dotting his Is. But I think that trust becomes less of an issue if we have access to it at any given time. So I think we should be given more open access to those procedures throughout any, any individual complaint.
Anyone else?
I wanted to submit, we had, we had discussed that issue about transparency and wanted to see the videos and all this other stuff. And we had said that if, we had said, well, Dick could go down and review all this stuff if he saw what he desires. And I think he commented that if anyone else wanted to do that, you know, they would be privy to it. So it's not like they're hiding anything from us. They had, said it was fine with them if we wanted to go down and check everything that they've done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just add that currently, yes, we do get documentation as a result of the investigation of each complaint, but there are other, there's other data, not data, but evidence, I should say. There are probably voice recordings of phone calls had with complainants, and then there's body camera footage. So whether or not we want, whether or not we want to have access to that information is something to think about.
What you're saying, the question is that you want to hear, you want to go down and hear what was actually said and not what was given to.
I'm sorry. You're breaking up for me. I can't.
All right. So what?
You're breaking up for me.
Go ahead, Ms. Harold, your voice is breaking up, but go ahead and try again.
All right. What I wish you're saying is that then, what you're saying then is that you want to hear or go in and hear, literally hear what was said over the, and the video on the, and from the cameras itself, it's the audio and the video. Is this what you're saying?
I would be open to considering that, yes.
Okay, because I know that when they give us their notes for each one of the cases that we have had, we do get their call notes. It starts with the 911 call, and it tells you the time and everything else. And we do have other information in every case that we have been given, the documentation and everything else, so. But you want to physically, you want to physically see it then, is what you're saying. I don't, well, that's everyone's choice.
I am proposing that, yes, is a possibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we've had this conversation during a meeting before a board meeting.
Yes, we have.
And yes, I am stating the value of, of seeing the camera footage for ourselves and hearing the phone conversations for ourselves.
Okay, so that's great. So we just want, that's what we're here tonight to receive input and hear, you know, everybody's vision of how we'd like to see it. So that's what we're here for. So thanks for the input on that piece. And if nobody has anything else, I think we could probably move on to the next one and, you know, we'll just take.
Thanks, Quarterfield, just briefly.
Oh, I.
It's Andrew.
Okay.
Just really briefly on this. One of the concerns, and this is something that I've talked to Chief Clifford about, one of the concerns with anything that's recorded, video, audio, is the need perhaps to make sure that any redactions that have to be made are made. That's not something that, you know, happens overnight. It's something that does take some time because we, particularly with video, it takes, because a lot of it's done frame by frame in terms of the redactions. And, you know, while certainly, you know, I think video and potential audio, you know, could be turned over, we would do that with, you know, obviously a FOIA request. It does take time, and I just want to make sure that, because there is a timetable to, you know, sometimes address these complaints, that the CPRB members are aware that there are redactions that a lot of times have to take place. And, you know, it's not something that can just be turned around overnight, unfortunately. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, I think that that's, I think that's clear because I don't, I think it takes a little bit of time before it gets to CPRB. So I definitely understand what you're saying. And, and my understanding of this is, as, as I said, we're not going to solve this tonight, and that's not even the purpose of this meeting, but just to have discussion, is that that wouldn't be for every single complaint. I just want to make sure I'm clear. But on complaints where they had questions, am I clear on that?
Yes, Counselor Quarterfield, correct.
Right, thank you. Okay.
Sorry, that's not what I'm saying, but.
No.
Thank you for asking.
So, okay, all right, I'm sorry that I didn't get that right. Ms. Kuduski, could you make, capture what Ms. Obie is saying?
Well, no, no, no. What I, I think, I think what I would like to have, that I would like to have the option, whether I, whether as, not I, I would like the board to have the option, whether we exercise that option or not, you know, it would be up to the board. And, and that the option should be there. We shouldn't have to, may I, could I, should I, every time? And it's, that's, that's what I think.
Okay, so you want that to be a part of the legislation, that the board has, and how the board can go about that?
Would you get, Andrew, what would you buy whiskey for?
What?
Whiskey.
This is coming from Mr. Posher's.
What did you, who did you buy whiskey for? Okay, all right, so we'll just, we'll capture those comments and, because, again, this isn't to resolve things tonight, we simply have a discussion, so I don't want to get stuck.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. 93-14, 93-14 is findings, internal affairs complaint. I, I did not have any comment, but Ms. Obie, Mr. Williams, any comment about the internal affairs complaint?
I had a, a comment. There was a, a section of that where it says that after a review of a complaint and its investigation, the findings may be found to be approved, disapproved, unable to be determined, returned for reevaluation, or referred to the mayor and city council, both of which have subpoena power. I thought that this component could address to some complaints that we see on the review board, where there are recommendations taking place that might not be disseminated back to the individual who made the complaint, but also to the community at large. So I thought, or would like to propose the review board utilizing the refer to city council component of this section to allow for, not necessarily the civilian police review board, but for those recommendations from the police department to have increased accountability so that those remedial efforts are then visible by the, the city at large. So that's what I thought would, would be one, one component of this to look at.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you.
Wait.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, please.
I hate to, um, so what I was getting at was, I'm sorry, which section am I on? 93-14 or 15?
14.
No comment, no comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? 93-14. 93-15 now, findings, policies, and procedures. I had no comment. Ms. Obie had a comment?
Yep, I'll try to make it brief. And it probably could have gone under 93-14, either or. So I guess I would think it might be a good idea to allow the board to render its own findings. And because, I mean, in reality, we could render a finding that is more forgiving than the police department might come up with. And I think that, you know, to, to limit the board to having to return the complaint to the police department to revisit, because we don't exactly agree on the finding, I'm not sure if that's always productive. And it's, it kind of ties our hands in terms of having our own perspective on a complaint in the finding.
Mr. Williams?
I have no further comments moving forward. Just your heads up.
Anyone else?
We did have, we did have a case where it wasn't back, and we thought the findings that was, that they had stated, it's not the finding that we felt it should have been. And it wasn't back, and it was changed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, 93-16, powers and duties, review and recommendation. I had no, no comment, no change. Ms. Obie?
No, nothing for me.
Mr. Williams?
No, Ms. Kuduski.
Anyone else? Okay, 93-17. Powers and duties, education and outreach. Ms. Obie, go ahead.
Yes, I think that board members, I'm trying to figure out the difference between what I'm suggesting and what the current legislation already says. I think that the outreach on behalf of the board should not be limited to either board members or an executive director taking responsibility. I think that there's some value for there to be outreach at various community meetings and events, and better utilizing, you know, or perhaps having its own website and utilizing social media more effectively. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Williams?
No comment.
Anyone else? 93-18, reporting. I had no comment. Mr. Williams?
No further comments, Ms. Kuduski.
Anyone else? All right, here comes my favorite part. Staffing. 93-19. I have a lot to say, but instead of having a lot to say, I actually have a budget that I would like to submit to the council, because it says the board may recruit, interview, and recommend the employment of an executive director, admin support personnel, investigator, educator, outreach specialist. Investigative and admin staff support services should, whenever possible, be provided by independent contractors, subject to all applicable law, law, local and state laws and ordinances. When I came on the board, this is the part that really caught my attention, and I found out there were, there was not an executive director. And actually, there was, this particular part of the legislation did not, apparently, it, it looks like it didn't even exist. So what I would like to recommend is basically for the, for the council, the mayor's office, and everyone that was involved in this legislation to make do on this staffing promise. I do have, that's my, that's my recommendation. I do have a budget that I would like to submit, because I believe that you can't have staffing without a budget. So that's my comment. It's blank, because there's a lot more I would like to say about it, but I will, I have, I, I put together a budget that I would like to submit. Ms. Obie?
Um, I'm going to give someone else an opportunity to speak first.
Ms. Kuduski, one thing I would like to say, that if, if, if there's going to be a budget submitted before it comes to the council, I'd like to make sure that it's reviewed within the police, civilian police review board, so that everyone there gets an opportunity to look at it and give.
Absolutely. And that is why it is, and that's why there's nothing there, Ms. Porterfield. That's why there's nothing there.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, moving forward.
Since it's, I guess I will just add that there is definitely value in the board having a budget. And it would lend, there's, there's really, without any budget, and this is probably a little off point, but without a budget, there's, there's no really real way for the board to operate independently. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
93-20, public deliberations. Ms. Obie had comment?
Yeah, yeah, I think that we could be a bit more, bit more transparent in terms of notifying the public about board meetings, when they happen, the time, whether or not they're virtual, and getting that information out.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
No comment, Ms. Kuduski.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Who does the, the meeting invite?
The chair.
That's me.
Can that, can those invite be extended to myself and the council?
Sure.
We have not, I have not been getting a copy of those invites.
That's, that's easily done. That's easily done.
Thank you. 93-21, inquiry suspension. And you, Mr. Williams?
No comment, Ms. Kuduski.
Ms. Obie?
No comment, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. 93-22, ongoing study by advisory committee. Ms. Obie, you had a comment?
Basically, that the advisory committee mentioned in the legislation was one that was proposed a while ago. I, I think perhaps maybe when the board was originally formed, and it was intended to kind of assess the progress being made by the board and give feedback within a certain timeframe. But I don't believe that that's happened. I could be wrong. At this point, I'm wondering whether or not an advisory committee might be, would be a good idea in order to get some objective opinions about how the board is functioning. And, yes. That's what I have to say.
Mr. Williams?
Similar to what Ms. Obie just said, I, I believe the intent has, has long passed of the advisory committee, but I do think there may be some value in having an outside or independent agency just monitoring and assessing the value of the CPRB. So I agree with that.
And there is 93-23, which is reserved, and 93-24, which is severability. And I have no, no comment on, no change, no comment on that. Does anybody have any issue with 93-24?
Excuse me, Ms. Kuduski? Can we step back? Because I'm not sure if everyone had the opportunity to give any input about the advisory committee. I heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
I don't, I personally do not, but I just want to make sure if any other, of the board members who do this work have anything else to say in terms of the advisory committee, where they think it's something good, it's something that needs. it's something that needs to be considered. Um, so if there's anybody else, I just want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity for them to have the opportunity to talk about that. So if everybody's satisfied with what's been said, that's fine. But I know that you didn't, um, because the other people weren't, you didn't um, ask them. So I just want to make sure they were asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. That's what I did. Terribly sorry.
So if no one has anything, then I'll I'll turn it back over to you.
Um, at this point in time, um, let's say thank you to the Public Safety Committee for allowing us to come before you and review this legislation that you had proposed, that uh, that established the CPRB. And you have heard our comments, our um, uh, what we would like, what we would like changed, what we would, what what we would like to stay the same. So at this point in time, uh, we'd like to hear from you, the commit, the Public Safety Committee. And I will return the screen back to uh, Mr. Mudavaren.
Okay, Mr. Mudavaren?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to turn my screen back. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So so in terms of of what I have to say, because I have been um, really um, you know, talking about this and making sure that we included this, included this as part of our conversation about police reform. Um, it's it's clearly stated in the manual that came from the state of New York. That that's what citizen oversight um, is one of the things. And so since we have this civilian police review board, of course, we wanted to talk about that. So at this point in time, I don't think that we will, we certainly won't be making any, because this, the council also has to do their review of the legislation. But I thought it was important to hear from the folks who are doing the work for us, the volunteers who are doing the work, to hear what your comment is, comments are. Um, simply because you're more, you you know, you you do it more than we do. And um, in looking at the legislation, I did see that there were some things we weren't doing um, and maybe could do. So that was my purpose of of asking us to have this conversation. I think it's very important to hear everyone's viewpoint. Um, glad to see that the 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 police chief and the mayor are on tonight because I I think all of us need to, um, as well as other council members, need to talk about that. So we, this is not to conclude anything tonight, but just to get input. And as I'd said before, we will continue to, um, you know, if council, if if, excuse me, if board members want to give input, we'll continue to take that input. And so as we, as the council, review that legislation, we can be able to take what the board members have said into um, consideration as we talk about, um, you know, any changes that need to be made to the resolution as part of our police reform that we're doing. So I want to thank everybody that um, came. Thank you for those who um, contributed. Um, and those who, for the work that you did. And and this is ongoing. So just make sure that you, you know, um, submit any comments to us and, you know, as we move forward. Uh, that's all I really have. Mr. Mr. Mudavaren is the Chair of Public Safety, so I will um, just go ahead and turn that back over to him.
Thank you. Uh, and what I would like to add is that uh, if this can be taken back to the board and all the comments um, combined into this um, sheet. And I know that you have a meeting tomorrow, that if you can review this at the end, so that the board can come up with their approval in terms of the um, the recommended changes to the council. And I ask that once that is completed, you will submit it to the council. And then we can take it from there and look at it based on your recommendation. I want to thank you for um, for looking into this. It's something that is very important as we go along in our community that we discuss in this, the police reform at this current moment. We also want to look at um, the CB, the Police Civilian Review Board, as it comes in regards to um, legislation. So um, you know, I'll leave, take away from this is that go back to the drawing board and um, continue with your um, comments and um, get it back to us. And I would like the entire board to participate and to discuss it and to vote on it. And then pass it on in regards to the budget. Ms. Porterfield mentioned that. That also needs to be discussed at the board level. And once it's approved, then that can be forwarded on to the council for us, um, review and and make our recommendation.
Um, thank you, John. It, we certainly won't be done tomorrow night, but we'll we'll get going on it. We've had a process in place that, um, well, thanks to your interest, we sort of short circuited and got right into it with you. But um, we'll be coming up with our our views in the matter and presenting them. And uh, we'll we'll do it as quick as we can.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues?
No, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mudavaren, for uh, for, you know, calling this this meeting. And, you know, I know it was a little bit of time out of people's evening, but certainly, um, I think it was worthwhile. And um, thank you CPR board members for uh, you know, participating.
Mr. Mudavaren?
Go ahead, Ms. Patrick.
Yes, I also want to thank the members of the um, the Police Review Board. I know it's a lot of time uh, that you put into this, and um, I appreciate that service that you have. I think it's really important. I've had a lot of friends over the years that have been in your seats. And I know that um, you know, you do a really important job for us. Um, for myself, um, I too would like to reiterate that I think we do need to hear from from everyone. So Mr. Shave and and Ms. Kuduski, as you um, continue to do this work. I know for myself, I'm going to definitely need to see this in writing uh, and be able to sit and review it a little bit. Um, rather than, you know, being able to absorb all of this uh, right now. And I'm sure that you're also sharing it um, through the Police Reform Task Force also. I hope, um, since I know that this is something that they're talking about, uh, I think simultaneously with with us hearing from you as well. So thank you. Um, I appreciate, I appreciate that you all spent this time with us tonight.
Thank you. Any comments from my my colleague? All right, seeing none, I just want to thank um, the civilian police review board member for taking the time out to meet with us and to highlight these concern. It was your request that we meet with you, and I have no problem making accommodations to meet and to air these um, concern in public. And we're happy to work together so that we can make things better. Thank you and good evening, everyone.
I think we need to call for a, I I need to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.